Good morning, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm Rob Pitts, I chair the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County. This is a regular meeting, today is October 7th, 2020. The hour is ten oh two AM. Madam Clerk. Good morning, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm Rob Pitts, I chair the Board of Commissioners. We're good? All right, ma- uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll for purposes of the form.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Liz Hausman.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Lee Morris. Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Present.
Vice Chairman Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Joe Carr.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are grateful for this day, for your grace and mercy upon our lives. We pray your blessing upon this state, this county, and this nation, Lord. We ask now you be with our leaders, give them your guidance and your direction. It is in your name we humbly pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
On page two, Consent Agenda, two zero dash zero six six three, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the County Commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item is desired, that item will be moved to the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have items to be removed from today's consent agenda. The first item, which is on page three, this item will be removed completely. It's the Board of Portment by Commissioner Morris for the Fulton County Board of Zoning Appeals. That nomination for Mr. Tyrone Carpenter will be removed. We've had items on the consent agenda to be removed for separate consideration by Commissioner Hall. First item is on page four. Two zero dash zero six seven zero, Community Development. Request approval to enter into a MOU with Gateway Center to serve as the lead agency to work with Fulton County Homeland Division to create a new countywide assessment center. Next item is on page five. Two zero dash zero six seven one, Request approval of resolution to amend the 2020 through 2024 proposed consolidated plan and the 2020 annual action plan. And one more item was added to be removed for separate consideration by Commissioner Hall is on page eight. At the top of the page, two zero dash zero six eight six, Real Estate and Asset Management. Request approval of resolution to declare certain Fulton County-owned real property at surplus. And that's all I have for the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other items on the consent agenda? That need to be removed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
All right, I vote yes.
And motion passes, six eight zero nine. We have an item to be added to today's regular meeting agenda. On page three, there's an add-on memo. Two zero dash zero seven one three, Registration of Elections. Presentation of Registration of Elections Update.
All right, this requires a supermajority of five votes. I'll entertain a motion to add. Uh, is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, five affirmative votes, please. Uh, let's vote. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And motion passes, six eight zero nine. Back on page eight. Regular meeting agenda. Two zero dash zero six eight eight, Adoption of the Regular Meeting Agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have amendment to today's regular meeting agenda. We have an item to be removed, two items to be removed and brought back at a later date. On page nine. Two zero dash zero six nine two, Real Estate and Asset Management. Request approval to renew existing contracts to provide standby repair, maintenance, and other real property projects based upon an as-needed basis. On page ten. Two zero dash zero six nine five, Real Estate and Asset Management. Request approval to renew existing contracts, provide standby roof maintenance, repair, and replacement services for countywide facilities on an as-needed basis. These two items are to be removed and brought back at a later date. Item to be revised. On page eight, two zero dash zero six nine zero, Commissioner Hausman has requested to include a presentation of a proclamation for National Breast Cancer Awareness Month with support from the full Board of Commissioners.
Okay, that's it?
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Hausman?
First of all, I want to thank the board for, um, signing on to this resolution, but I would like the record to reflect that Commissioner Hall asked to be a, a full co-sponsor.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda as amended.
Second.
To move to seconded, cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes, six eight zero nine. Two zero dash zero six eight nine, Radification of Minutes, Regular Meeting Minutes, September 2nd, 2020. Recession Meeting Postage and Minutes, September 16th, 2020.
All right. Is there a motion? All right, I'll, I'll. All right, I'll second. Properly moved and seconded, cast your votes, please. Uh, Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Two zero dash zero six nine zero, Presentation of Proclamation Certificate. Proclamation recognizing National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, sponsored by Commissioners Hausman-Hall with full board support.
So, who's going to read it?
Um, I'm, I'm going to read it, sir.
Okay.
Whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, breast cancer is the second lien cause of cancer deaths for women in the United States and Georgia each year. And about, in, in about 245,000 cases of breast cancer are diagnosed in women and about 2,200 in men, thus causing about 41,000 deaths among women and 460 deaths among men. And whereas early detection is critical through prevention initiatives such as mammograms that can detect breast cancer up to two years before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas the Fulton County Board of Health Breast and Cervical Cancer Prevention Program through funding from the Georgia Department of Public Health provides breast cancer screenings, diagnostic services, and referrals to treatment as medically indicated to help reduce the impact of breast cancer on uninsured women residing in Fulton County. And whereas since January 1st, 2016, more than 1,000 women have received clinical breast exams and additional mammography services through the Breast and Cervical Cancer Prevention Program through partnering with 100 Black Men of South Metro Atlanta Incorporated and participating in U.S. Congressman David Scott's Annual Health Fair and the SCLC Women's Pampering for Peace. Peace, the Breast Ca- and Cervical Cancer Prevention Program continues to screen women in non-traditional locations throughout Fulton County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners hereby commends the Fulton County Board of Health Breast and Cervical Cancer Prevention Program, community, community medical providers, and community partners who dedicate their lives to fighting for a world without breast cancer and thus hereby proclaim October 2020 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Fulton County, Georgia.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, on page nine, Public Hearing. Two zero dash zero six nine one, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment, register online to join the public comment portion of the Zoom call. Again, submit public comment in by email or filling out the form located on the county website, Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes.
We have three digital submissions. The first of these is from Amber Connor of Atlanta. The Byke Council of Neighborhoods has sent to each of you and to Mayor Bottoms a six-point resolution with increased fines and specific requests regarding three important issues. Number one, illegal street racing. Number two, illegal truck traffic. Number three, illegal noise violations. The resolution was approved by a vote of 80% of the 39 BCN-membered neighborhoods. The speed with which these neighborhoods voiced their support shows the alarm that our neighborhoods are feeling. We believe that our elected officials, by implementing these recommendations, will make our community and all of Atlanta safer. We respectfully ask for your support and your quick action.
Public Comment by Donna Renfro Lawson, Comment. God morning again, elected, selected, and rejected commissioners, full coal staff, citizens, everybody. CAPP Hooker has applied such bamboozling techniques through no and/or poor communication that the library attorney, Abdabola Lem Makara, is publishing untrue statements. I can't vote, I won't vote until full coal leadership resolves their issues with me about casting my ballots. I being me, Donna Renfro Lawson, I can't vote because CAPP Hooker wrote that I am not to contact library employees. Well, how am I to know who the library employees are that have been mandated to work the polls, et cetera? Ask yourself if that directive makes common and/or legal sense. Therefore, the responsibility of this matter lies within the realm of authority. There are candidates and causes that will not receive my selective choice because of you, the elected commissioners, and the selected authoritative staff. An example of good and necessary trouble would be an appropriate contact from full coal's leadership. Next topic, Gail Hunter Holloman continues to express some concerns with library management. To expound upon one critical subject would be the Chromebook and/or laptop issues that directly affect participating in the 2020 census. Where are those devices and what is the circulation policy for utilizing them to support our community's count? State librarian Julie, Julie Walker has communicated that over $53,000 was allowed for FCLS's uses and points specifically for the census. Will you help the citizens understand operations on how you can block my voting efforts and possible census count dollars? We are reading and listening.
Um, Public Comment by Mary Weston of Atlanta. Greetings, Commissioners. As a citizen of Fulton County and especially South Fulton, I am appreciative of the efforts made by you to assure that there are adequate polling places and workers for your constituents to exercise the right to vote in this critical November 3rd presidential election. My hats off especially to Commission Chair Rob Pitts, who I've seen on numerous, on TV numerous times checking out polling places, especially in the African-American communities of Fulton County. Commissioner Pitts, you dropped the ball on us denying masks for South Fulton citizens at the beginning of COVID-19, but you've redeemed, but you've been redeemed for now due to your tireless efforts to prevent voter suppression, especially among black and brown people of Fulton, South Fulton County. Having friends of more than 15 years who live in Fayette County, a predominantly white and Republican county, who brag that it only takes 30 minutes to vote and sometimes less time to vote in any election makes me angry. But we have spoken to our commissioners about South Fulton 2020 election voting lines, machines that don't work, and poll worker disasters. You have acted and made corrections. Last, last, we thank the Fulton County Board of Elections and Registration and perhaps this commission for sending four staff to Fulton County jails registering detainees to vote. Pamela Coman and staff, thank you. Now, how these detainees will vote is the next big question. Commissioners, please know our eyes are watching you. That's the last of the comments we have.
All right, thank you. Any others?
No further speakers.
All right, no further speakers. Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Under County Managers' Renewal Items, Open and Responsible Government on page 10. Two zero dash zero six nine three, Real Estate and Asset Management. Request approval to renew existing contracts to provide standby plumbing repair services for Fulton County facility.
Motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
I properly moved and seconded, cast your votes. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes, five eight zero nine. Two zero dash zero six nine four, Real Estate and Asset Management. Request approval to renew existing contracts, provide onsite door repair and preventive predictive maintenance services countywide.
For approval.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. On page 11. Two zero dash zero six nine six, Information Technology. Request approval to renew existing contracts to provide maintenance, supply, support services, and software and associated hardware for all multi-function devices.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, cast your votes, please. Commissioner Haus, Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Under County Managers' Items, two zero dash zero six nine seven, Presentation of the COVID-19 Operational Response Update.
All right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. Just a brief update today, due to improving trends, so we have narrowed the report. A couple of highlights, seven-day trend on new cases now at 85 per day, positive test rate at a new low, 3.7% and over 660 beds being available put us in a very good position. Testing remains, we believe, the key reason that we interrupted the progress of the virus. In Fulton County, we tested now close to 680,000 folks, and that's an outstanding accomplishment. We still have testing capacity, testing about 3,300 or so a day now with a capacity over 8,500. So that's an opportunity as we move into the fall. One of the things that Dr. Paxton will mention today is the use of our testing sites for flu vaccinations, so we'll talk more fully about that. And I think that's an excellent, uh, use of those capabilities. We've modeled out the current demand, in other words, if there were no change in demand for testing over the last, uh, three to four months of the year, we would only have about a million or so in resources from testing kits that would not be utilized. And that's the minimum, and obviously in the grand scheme of a hundred and four million dollar program. So we would recommend continued current course and speed with that capability. For reopening, we will remain in our current posture. First of all, it really is a level of uncertainty about projecting COVID trends as we see other states now spiking and the fall season upon us. Secondly, and very importantly, is we're focused on elections. So we're using both current library locations as well as library personnel to support a successful election. Number three, we will revisit our library offerings and that posture. Given that you'll see the report today, 10 new employee positive cases being reported, which is part of 123 that have been reported thus far, and one death. We think that safety first in terms of our employees is the right mindset. The CARES funds continue to be managed tightly as we review progress now weekly against our purchase orders and commitments, and thus far have paid out 48.2 million. Also, the new treasury guidance just received in the last week or so allows us to use, CARES dollars to offset public safety costs, which of course we have significant ones in Board of Health, Sheriff Department, and Police Departments. So we have ample opportunities to use these funds fully, uh, across the remainder of the year. We've now distributed, as you'll see in our report, 8.9 million to our municipalities, and we have five cities that had yet to approve an IGA. I think one just came in, uh, yesterday, so I believe that's down to four. We had our first monthly meeting with the mayors. The next meeting is scheduled for Friday, November the 6th, and we expect the mayors to forward an agenda for us, uh, to consider. We spent a huge amount of time, uh, managing the CARES budget, and I've gotten good feedback from several of you, uh, relative to now shifting focus to the 2021 general fund. Couple of pieces of good news, our spending controls have reduced our expenses to 60 million or so below what the budget would have called for in 2020. That obviously gives us some flexibility going into, uh, a period of time where I think the economy certainly is still uncertain. And the revenue projections based on the good work, uh, from our tax assessor's office and tax commissioner office do show an improvement, and we'll walk through what drove that improvement from a previous view. And as I've mentioned to several of you, that gives us some, again, additional flexibility moving into 2021 to allocate resources against eight to 10 major categories. But you'll see some of those major categories are things that we would normally consider routine, like vacant positions or the pay plan that we articulated and proposed a couple of years ago, or pay-for-performance. So there will still be some tough trade-offs for the board, uh, to make in that budget. But we have revised our budget schedule, and we'll show more detail today and explicitly how we will seek your input in the development of the budget as well as review prior to presenting in total. However, given the limited resources, we don't feel like large departmental budget reviews are warranted or productive, uh, at this time. The most important task in front of us is elections, and I think we've made significant progress on all of the issues that, uh, came to, uh, to our attention in June and affected the voter experience, like the absentee process, the number of early voting locations, staffing, uh, and the like. We've also done, I think yeoman's work to ensure either through onsite technicians, mobile voting, uh, capability, which is the first in the state, as well as a multimedia campaign, that we are well positioned to deliver the best voter experience, uh, in November. And we wanted to give you an update on that today, hence the, uh, add-on item. So we look forward to, uh, any feedback that you have, uh, on, uh, again, that most important subject. So again, Mr. Chairman, we intend to move rapidly through this today, a little bit less, uh, to discuss, perhaps, given these good results. But I'll follow the same pattern, and we'll ask Ms. Anna Roach, the Chief Operating Officer, to start, and then Ms. Sharon Whitmore, the CFO, to, uh, bring up the financial issues.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam COO, are you with us?
I am. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, members of the board. As the manager stated, based on our positive results, our report today has been shortened. Uh, one difference you will experience in today's report is that our District Health Director does not have a formal slide that she's included in the presentation, um, but within her busy schedule has made herself available during the EMA portion of the report, uh, to the board, um, to answer any questions that you have from a public health or epidemiology standpoint. So glad to have her today, um, and thank you again, Dr. Paxton. Matt, I would like to turn it over to you and your team to go through, um, the planning section of the report.
Good morning, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. Well, we did hear a lot of this information last week, Friday, when we had that joint meeting with the mayors. We'd like to just go ahead and update some of the information that you did hear. Uh, we'll get started with a report from Doug, and then we'll go ahead and wrap up, uh, with myself with a slide talking about our initial response, uh, to testing. And Dr. Paxton will have one or two billets to go ahead and discuss at that time as well. Doug, get us started.
Good morning, Commissioners. Next slide. I always, uh, I, I always like to look at, put things in perspective, and I think this slide does a really good job of that. If you look at the United States, the latest United States heat map that you see. And just five weeks ago, Georgia was number one in, uh, communicability of, uh, COVID-19, and we're at 30, uh, as of this week, and you can actually see that displayed on this chart. But you can also see the spread of the virus to more rural areas and into the Midwest and Upper Midwest where they have a pretty high communicability standard. It's the unpredictability of this disease. If I were to put a worldwide mu- map up here, you would see, you know, other places in the world that are experiencing new waves of COVID infections. So, um, I, I just think it's important to, to realize that while things are looking good in Georgia, and we're going to continue to give you encouraging news today, that we need to be vigilant. Uh, on the bottom left, you see, um, apples to apples, so per 100,000, uh, on cases. Fulton County is the yellow line, and, uh, USA is the light gray line, and Georgia is the dark gray line. As you can see, Fulton County is performing, um, outperforming both, uh, the United States average and the Georgia average pretty significantly. And on the right-hand side, it's the same information, per 100,000 deaths. And Fulton County is really doing well in deaths, um, compared to almost any metric that you can put out there. I would say that, uh, we have averaged, uh, right around, uh, one death per day for at least the last two weeks. So that's, that's very encouraging information. But once again, it kind of puts us in some perspective with the rest of the country and the state. Next slide. You're used to seeing this slide. On the far left is our daily testing. Uh, the county manager talked about at, at our current levels. And, uh, at our SPACs and, uh, core partnership, we have been doing, um, right about 1,500 tests a day, and then between the hospitals, CVS, and the universities, we've been doing about 2,500 a day. And it's been that way on a fairly even plateau for almost, uh, three months now. So we are fairly confident that, uh, we'll remain at that level. Uh, we'd like to see more testing, obviously, but, uh, uh, we are, uh, monitoring that. On the next, in the orange, is the daily cases. You could see that there's a small bump on the far-hand right that could be attributed possibly to Labor Day-type activities, and then a downward trend again, and then a little bit of a plateau over the last few days. Uh, same type of thing, you can really, if you look at the far right on hospital bed census, you can start to see a, a very significant plateau, uh, starting to form in the hospital bed census. We've been between 160 and 172 in beds for over two weeks. And, uh, and that's, that's significant because it, it is a definite plateau. And then, like I said, Fulton County's performance in, uh, COVID deaths per day. The seven-day trend is .57, and we've been right around, just to right around one, uh, death per day in Fulton County for over two weeks now. Next slide. Percent positivity, uh, like, like we talked about, our, our goal was to, uh, get to, our, our first goal was to get to under 5%, and we've done that since the last board meeting. And, but we have been at a plateau. You can see it represented. I, I, I have the hospitalizations in the blue at the bottom. And you can see a pretty significant plateau where we've leveled off right around 3.7%. And it's, it's been that way once again for about two weeks. Fulton County as a whole for percent positivity, everybody doing testing is at 3.7%, so the hospital numbers are very close to the, the, uh, countywide numbers. And then the state has a little bit more flexibility, and I believe it's because of, um, they, they get reports from some of the rural areas maybe not as frequent, and, and so the state has a little bit of an up and down, but they've been in a plateau to around 7%. Next slide. We alluded to the fact that bed availability, uh, is, is, is really pre-COVID at this point. I, I will say that there are significantly, significantly high numbers in non-COVID use, which is the blue bars on the left. And, and that is creating, uh, occasional shortages in room, as you can see, uh, in rooms. As you can see, on September 30th and October 1st, we were in a, a shortage, uh, for rooms. But, uh, anyway, it, it's, we're in a better place than we've been a long time for hospital beds. On the right, even since Friday, we did get new information, uh, from. On the right, even since Friday, we did get new information from the modeling scenarios that we look at, and pretty significant drop. The, the next peak is now predicted on December seventeenth with two hundred and seventy-seven hospital beds in use, which is a fairly significant jump, but nowhere near we were projecting last week in December, a five hundred and sixty-one bed height. So we don't have data into 2021 yet. We will have that soon, and hopefully we'll kind of understand. But the, the next projected height, like I said, middle of December at two hundred and seventy-seven beds. Next slide. So looked at this, as you can see, we are moving, I want, as you all know, the, the green line is the best case scenario, the orange, solid orange line is the most probable, and the red line is worst case. You see these, these lines kind of coming together, so there's a higher degree of certainty for projections for the end of the year. Even though we just updated it this Sunday, you can see that we're still with the black lines, a little bit under the green line, which is great news. But I also will point out, if you look at the large dash line that has the eight oh eight underneath it, that is the eleven point five percent data that we were at for over three months on this incident, and you can see we continue to kind of pull away from that dash line to the point where that the trend is still going, we are, I, I don't have the slide in the deck today, but as of yesterday, we were at eight point oh two percent of the state's deaths in reference, which is, yeah, it's just incredible to me as I've been watching the data every day. And, and, and then, like I said, I, on a day to day basis, if we were at eleven and a half percent, like we were for three months, as of the fifth of October, there would have been eight hundred and eight people dead in Fulton County, and then on that day, we actually had five hundred and seventy-nine. So I think that's a, a, a win for the county. We are, we really are excited about the trend downward there. Next slide. I'm going to end up with the scorecard. We continue to, to evolve this, but even talking with some of the Epi folks and, and as we continue to look at this, we're pretty happy with our, our metrics on the right hand side. Our capacity has gone up because we do now have a fourth stationary SPAC to eight thousand eight hundred for testing. Our demand, like I said, has been very steady, between three thousand five hundred or so. Our cases went up slightly in the yellow, our percent positives have been on a plateau, as I talked about, has, has our hospitalizations. And then if you look at the hospital numbers for six, seven, and eight, those are all very encouraging, like I said, even pre-COVID availability, but we need to remain vigilant because we are getting into flu season. And then the, the deaths per day is on a slight downward trend, and our morgue capacity is at a plateau also. Matt, next slide.
Thank you, Doug. Just to go ahead and Doug telling Doug, Doug's comments about the morgue capacity, we actually have been maintaining two apparatuses to go ahead and handle any surge. He's gotten to the point that Grady is working with us. They actually ran into a situation where they had to do some emergency repairs to their morgues, so we are working closely with their team today and over the weekend to support them with the resources that we have to ensure that they have a dignified way of holding these individuals until they can get to the mortuary services to go ahead and get ready for their final resting. So we're very proud of our medical examiner team working closely with Grady to go ahead and help them during this time of need. As you can see, six hundred seventy-eight thousand plus total tests that we've done still keeps us a little shy of the twenty-three percent mark of the total tests done in the state of Georgia. Once again, just cannot reiterate enough, folks, take advantage of getting the testing. You're getting results much less than forty-eight hours in a turnaround. We're seeing people in twenty-six to thirty-hour range of getting their results. So the lab capacity is there to go ahead and handle that, please take advantage of that. Once again, we are still having great partnership with the Board of Health and Core, Dr. Paxton. I'm going to ask her to speak on the last two bullet points on my slide here, but one of the things that we have added is the Adamsville site. For those of you that are not familiar with that, that's thirty-seven hundred Martin Luther King Drive, Junior Drive, excuse me, Southwest. That's a Monday through Friday location. That's a fixed site, that's a walk-up, similar to our central location. All that information can be found out at the Fulton County website, the Board of Health website, and how to register and how to take advantage of those resources there. So folks, please do that. Still have our eight mobile units out in the community, specifically today is great to see that we're supporting the Mexican consulate general, as well as College Park in Sandy Springs, is some of the cities that we have our mobile units in today, as well as the Board of Health unit that is over here at the government center, supporting some of the other state, local governments in around the county building as well. I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Paxton, can you speak a little bit about the contact tracing as well as the flu shot integration? Dr. Paxton?
Thanks. Can you, I hope, I hope you can hear me, I'm having a little problem with my computer.
I'll be clear, ma'am.
Good, great. Well, anyway, I'm just going to give some minor updates. Some of this information is very new, and it wasn't even available for me to give on Monday to put into a slide, but the three things that I'm just going to address are specifically about the flu shot into, the flu, flu campaign. I just want to remind everyone that we are already giving out flu shots at all of our clinics as per usual, and we have sliding scales for people who, you know, who don't have insurance and the like. However, it is our goal now, particularly with COVID going on and with a very important flu season coming up, our goal is that to provide for completely uninsured or underinsured adults free flu vaccines at all of our drive-through and walk-through SPACs. We're using state-funded vaccines. So our, we're starting a sort of a soft phase, which is going to be our soft launch, starting October fifteenth through the end of October, and our vaccine drive is going to be taking place at our south SPAC, which is Wolf Creek, and our central SPAC, which is at two sixty-five Boulevard, which is our walk-up SPAC, and at one of our Board of Health mobile units and one of our core mobile units. And so assuming that that all goes well, we work out all the kinks, then we're going to expand to all the rest of our, our testing sites, which are the four fixed sites that you see on the slide, and our eight mobile, mobile units. We're going to be providing those vaccines Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM, and Saturday from nine to one PM. In addition, and this should be of interest particularly to you, we are conducting in collaboration with DPH, a state capital flu vaccination event, which is going to be taking place at the Capitol on October twenty-second from ten AM to one PM. So all the legislators and all state and county employees are welcome to get their flu vaccine during this event. Now this, we will be, you know, we'll be billing insurance for the, for the vaccinations, and we accept Aetna, Anthem, BSGA, Cigna, and United Healthcare. And for those who have, of course, Medicaid, Peach Care, and Medicare, of course, we take that. And for those who are Kaiser Insurance, there will be a representative there from Kaiser to give out vaccinations. So we're trying to make this as inclusive as possible. So once again, that's going to be at the Capitol from ten to one PM on October twenty-second. The two other points I wanted to bring up is that we are, no one is more thrilled than I that our test positivity rates have fallen below five percent. I do want to remind people that this is our, we really want to get our test positivity rate to below one percent. That is generally regarded as a level at which you are in a much better position for opening up businesses and schools and all that. So we are definitely on a downward trend, we're going the right way, but we still have a ways to go. So our goal is to get this below one percent. And related to that, we have a very large order of masks, of reusable masks that will be coming in. These are the ones that, if you can see me, these are the ones that are, you know, have our logo on it, and they're double sided, they're very good, they're very popular. We have a load of, we have about a very large order arriving on around October seventeenth. So besides distributing those at the normal sites, which you'd expect at our SPACs, our clinics, county buildings, and the like, we are going to be expanding to get these out to everyone. So we're looking at things that's putting them on to, you know, getting them to voting sites, to malls, to other places where people congregate, we're distributing them to our, our interfaith partners. And I'm going to ask your help, that we will have a lot of masks available. We'd like, you know, if you have events that you would like to distribute these, we absolutely encourage you to do so. You can always contact Matt Kalmeier about this. You can also contact the Board of Health, and we will get them to you. So it's very important that at this, as we move into the flu season, that we get these masks out to everyone. And so we have a large number coming in, so please be generous, and we'll, and we'll try to get these out to your constituents. So those are the main things that I wanted to bring up now.
And Mr. Chairman, we're ready for questions.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Any questions? Thank you very much. Madam CEO, continue, please.
Thank you. Next slide. Won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but based on the reports from EMSI as well as Dr. Paxton, it's pretty clear that we have positive trends occurring. I do want to keep in mind Dr. Paxton's final comments about areas where she continues to have concerns, in particular, the fact that we haven't gotten down to a one percent positivity rate yet, but very, very good news for Fulton County as well as the state of Georgia. Next slide. This slide provides a quick overview of where we are in terms of reopening. We are going to continue in our current posture, primarily with closures of our senior centers, intellectual and developmental disability centers, as well as arts facilities. Our phase two steps, in the last meeting, we mentioned the possibility of talking with Dr. Ferdinand about opening tax offices at Brainbriar and one forty-one, which are currently closed. For logistical and other purposes, Dr. Ferdinand did not believe that that was prudent at this time, and so we have taken that off of our horizon for phase two first steps. We are, however, working with departments who do have offices at one forty-one to have limited administrative offices returned in a very planned and coordinated way to continue to put the health and safety of our employees as our primary focus. So that effort is underway, and we're in discussions with those directors as we speak. Deputy Chief Operating Officer Alton Adams continues to work with our justice partners to pursue the chief judge's desire to stand up two grand juries in, in, in the next coming months. So the primary focus of that effort is to identify locations that will facilitate social distances and are best practices to keep our constituents and jurors safe. And so that effort is underway as a part of our phase two first steps. Glad to report to the board and the public, however, that emergency essential operations are continuing, have not ceased, and, and, and we are grateful for our employees who work in those areas and have continued working through this pandemic. We continue to hope for their, their safety and extend our gratitude to them for the work that they're doing in those emergency roles. Also pleased to share with the board that all of our virtual service, as well as our contactless service deliveries, such as curbside service with our, in our libraries, is receiving a huge amount of accolades from our constituents. So we are going to continue those services. We have been able to keep our employees safe in the delivery of those services, and so again, we're pleased to share with the board that those, those efforts are going very well. Next slide. We committed to keep the board updated, I believe, at Commissioner Hall's request, which I thought was a very good one. So thank you, Commissioner Hall, for that. Our update on the number of positive employees since the last meeting, in this case, it was the last three weeks because we had a long September, but since that time, we've had ten new positives in the departments that are listed there. Unfortunately, we are going to continue to hope for good outcomes for those employees who have tested positive in the last three weeks. Next slide. This is a cumulative view of all Fulton County employees that have tests, that we have a record of, that have tested positive so far. We're up to a hundred and twenty-three with the last ten in the last three weeks. Next slide. And so with respect to positive cases, the other view that we would like to share with the board is the facility cleanings by department. Our numbers continue to decline, which is consistent with our positivity rate across the county, but in Fulton County facilities, we are seeing a reduction in the number of requests to sanitize facilities, and I think by Dreams' report, we are down to about two a week in terms of requests and sanitizations of our facilities right now. So that gives a snapshot of how we are doing from an operational standpoint with positive employees as well as sanitizing our facilities. Next slide. Each meeting, Commissioners, I try to provide a highlight of an operational area that we are working on that is of interest or should be of interest to the Board of Commissioners. This week, we have made a decision to provide the board an update in an area that we have had an incredible amount of focus over, over the last week or so, and that is an effort to build a plan through collaboration with our federal, state, and local partners for election security. If anyone is paying attention to news reports over the last several weeks, there is a heightened sense that public safety may be at risk associated with our upcoming election, and while you can't predict everything, we would like to be as prepared as we possibly can for whatever might come. Although we will hope for the best outcomes in terms of our, a safe and uninterrupted election, we do believe it's important to work with our partners to plan for the worst. And so we have taken on this effort. Deputy Chief Operating Officer Alton Adams is working with the leadership of AFSIMA to pull this effort together, and the areas of focus that we've identified from our kickoff meeting are listed on the left side of this slide, and they include our polling location security. And for your awareness, the Board of Registration and Elections does have a contractor that they have worked with in the past to provide security to some polling locations, and so we are looking to possibly enhance those efforts, just to make sure that all of our polling locations are secure. The other area outside of our actual polling locations that we think is a significant area of focus is general and overall public safety and crisis and consequence management. And so for that effort, we are getting information and intelligence from our state and federal partners. We are working with the leadership of the public safety offices in all of our cities, and then we are going to leverage our resources that we've provided to our Atlanta-Fulton Emergency Management Agency to make sure that we are as prepared as we can be from a public safety standpoint. Our Fulton County government facilities, of course, is of particular interest to us. Those are significant assets of the county that we want to secure and protect in the event of any public disruption. And most, probably most significantly, our CIO is very, is very intent on making sure that our, that our IT infrastructure and network security is also at their, at their highest point of alert at this point. And so these are the areas of focus that we are meeting this week and next to develop detailed plans for. We will not be publicly sharing any of the details of those plans because of the security nature of them, but we did want to provide the board with an overview of the areas we are focusing on. We are going to be intently doing this work over the next three weeks. As you know, this November election is upon us, and so we do have a sense of urgency around all of these areas of focus. And so on the right hand side of the slide, you will see our overall approach for developing safety plans in, in, in those three areas. Commissioners, that wraps up my brief update on reopening, as well as the operational highlight. as well as the operational highlight, which is our efforts around election security. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to entertain any questions the board may have in these areas.
I have a question.
Commissioner Hall.
On, I, thank you for your presentations. They, they've been really good. And Anna, thank you for including the numbers of COVID-related positive COVID employees cumulative and the, the last three weeks. This is good. I have a question because when I look at the numbers, what jumps out at me is that E 911 on the cumulative page have, they have 26 cases. And then District Attorney has 10 and the clerk has 18. I want to be clear to our audience that the clerk is not the clerk to the P L C. It's the clerk to Superior Magistrate Court. But my question is, could these numbers possibly be higher because they have more people confined in an enclosed room or office space? Because I was told that over in the clerk's office and in the courts, that employees were being told to go get tested when it was found that other employees actually had COVID-19. But those employees who were being told to go get tested were told to come back to work and wait until they got their results, which would then create a situation where that employee would be sitting at work and get their results, finding out that they also have COVID. But they're sitting in the office. So now you have this vicious cycle of, okay, now the other employees have to go and get tested and wait for their results. So if you recall, during one of the previous B L C meetings, I asked the question about, are we communicating the same message out as far as how to handle testing and, and the positive results of employees getting COVID? Because there seems to be some confusion out there across the county government offices.
I hope Kenneth Herman is with us to help me answer this question. And I think that you've shared some good information with the board and the public to answer or try to address the first part of your question about what may have been the possible cause for the numbers that we're seeing in those public safety areas, in particular District Attorney E 911 and the clerk's office. You know, it's hard for us to make a determination of where people are getting positive. But I think you're right in, in being suspicious of the fact that it is in these public safety areas that typically do their work in confined spaces. I, I will let you know without concluding how these employees became positive. I will let you know that from an emergency services, that's E 911 standpoint, we did take additional precautions to, to disperse the E 911 call takers by leveraging our alternate location over on the F I B area. So at this time, we do have less call takers confined in that one space because we're utilizing our fail oversight as well. So hopefully that will help. And actually, I believe that we've seen a good deal of improvement in the positivity rate for E 911 call takers based on simply separating the shifts into two different locations. And, and hopefully we'll see, continue to see improvement in that area. I do know that, yes, ma'am. I do know that the District Attorney does have a, some level of a work from home policy. So I, I don't really have a lot of information on what is possibly driving the numbers there. But, but you're correct, we have worked with the state of Superior and magistrate court to try to meet all of her needs with respect to P P E for those emergency essential employees that she is required to manage through working in person at this time. So I think those are all very good comments, Commissioner Hall, and will continue to keep you and the rest of the Board abreast of progress in this area. In terms of the second part of your question, I did bring to the attention of the Chief Human Resource Officer the concern that there may be confusion about what the protocols are for notifying employees and sending them home when exposure is suspected. I do believe that he doubled down on his efforts to, to inform members of our leadership team on what those protocols are. But I see that he's here with us and I'll let him speak for himself.
Thank you.
Good, good morning, everyone. Kenneth Herman, Chief H R Officer. Thank you very much, Anna, for clarifying. And Commissioner, yes, we did double down to make sure that the communication was clear to all departments, especially those departments that continued their operation during the COVID-19 event. There were some significant changes based on guidance received periodically from either the CDC or the Board of Health or from the governor's office. And we tried our best to keep those, our guidance up to date and issued to all those organizations. I can speak specifically for the clerk's office that the clerk and her team has been very involved and in constant communication with the H R department about what and how they should address those kind of situations. And I also, after the conversation that we had last board meeting, I circulated to you and all the fellow colleagues on the commission copies of the protocols that are the standing protocols that everyone should be following to address any potential exposures and/or positives that may occur within the workplace.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Kenneth.
Questions, Commissioners?
Yes, I have a question, please.
Commissioner Hausmann?
And we can stay on the topic of our employees, Ms. Roach. 123, you know, looks to the public as a very, very high number. And of course, we take every case seriously. I do think it's important, though, to share with the public just how many employees we have in Fulton County. Do you have that number readily available?
Yes, sorry, Anna, it's roughly about 4,600 and some change, Commissioner. So the number there of the 123 is less than 10% of the organization. Significantly less than 10%.
Yeah, it's probably closer to 5%, is it not? Okay. And then, you know, cases are, are obviously not anything we want to see. But of, of the employees that have contracted COVID, do you have any idea how many have had to require hospitalization?
No, ma'am.
I, I think that's also important to know because, you know, the severe cases, of course, are the ones of most concern. There's a lot of folks that get it that have no symptoms, as we see. So it's just another part of our educational outreach, if you will, of our experience here within Fulton County, managing a large organization that's, has a lot of employees. So.
Providing that kind of information, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Hausmann, I, I would say yes. That would be great information for us to, to know. I, I think one of our constraints is that we are, we are sort of constrained by the, what, what employees will self-disclose to us because of the nature, the medical nature of the information. We can't mandate employees tell us things like whether or not they've been hospitalized.
No, we certainly can. And I wouldn't want to violate anyone's privacy. But if someone's quarantining for the 14 days and then is able to come back to work versus someone that's out for a month, I think, you know, that's pretty self-explanatory, the severity of a case. So I just, I hope that no one's had, you know, we've had one unfortunate death that we are all acutely aware of. But again, I just think that that helps us as we move forward and work towards reopening just to understand exactly what we've been dealing with.
Hi, this is Dr. Paxton. I just wanted to just interject too. And also you have to keep in mind too, that not only do we have these index cases, but they, people who are infected also are at risk of spreading. So that is another thing in mind. That we might not know who, who they spread to.
And then as we, as we talk about reopening, I mean, one thing that we have to do regardless of, of any other activities is conduct the elections. And so obviously, while security is an issue, so is the health and safety of not only our workers, but the public. Can you just speak, you know, an overview, a broad overview of the precautions that will be taken as we start early voting next week to try and protect the public and our employees as they vote?
Okay, I'm not sure if Bridget Bailey is close by. I definitely would be looking for her help to, to summarize this because it's more like an elections question. In fact, Commissioner Hausmann, I think the board did approve the discussion item.
And I'm happy to wait if someone is, would be prepared to speak to that. I would appreciate it.
I think they will be prepared.
Yes, let's hold that and we will make sure that Ms. Bailey is available at that time.
All right, thank you. And then I just want to say, I know we mentioned a little bit about the courts and what's happening there with the grand juries. I just want to say that I'm getting a lot of inquiries about when court operations will resume, especially in the area of family court. So if, if you could, please provide us some information on that. Because we are getting, at least I'm getting inquiries. And I don't really have a firm answer on any timelines with regard to that.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Hausmann. I will ask Alton to work with Judge Brasher to try to give you an idea of the timeline. I do also know that the, our court system is subject to whatever timeline the state has in place as well. So we will, we will definitely work on getting you a response to that today. And we'll share it with the rest of the board.
Very good. I appreciate that. And then also libraries, we've talked about this briefly as well. That is the thing that I do get the most inquiries about, especially now that school is resuming. People, you know, think if schools can be open, then our libraries should be opening. So I hope that we are really seriously looking at whether it's a phased-in reopening or some sort of plan to get at least regionally access for our libraries. I, I hope that we are working on that.
Yes, Commissioner, we'll be looking at that more closely after the election. As you know, our libraries serve as, many of our libraries serve as election sites. So after the election, we'll certainly be taking a closer look at that.
I, I would hope that we take a look at it now in preparation for opening in a couple of weeks, whether it's before or after the election. Most of our elections, you know, are in community rooms in the libraries. So there is separation. I just, I think it's very important. The public is asking and asking. And so I, I don't want us to wait until the election to start looking at how we open. Let's come up with a timeline, please.
Hello?
Hello?
Well, I'll just make one comment. I, I think we can certainly do that. We also looked at what other counties are doing. And while some other counties are saying that they are open, it is, it's more form than really function. In other words, it's open if you don't come in and browse. It's open if you don't spend more than one hour at a computer. It's open if you, you know, don't touch anything. I mean, in other words, even in the ones that are open, it's, it's not much in terms of, of what they're offering. But I think we are going to look at it. We are going to, as I said, keep a focus on the elections right now and then determine where we are and what the plan might look like. Again, consistent with what the health trends are, any advice Dr. Paxton gives us, as well as what the public is interested in.
Okay, well, I appreciate the caution. I certainly don't want anyone to be put at a risk. And I, whether it's a phased-in, limited reentry or whatever we deem to be safe, I just think it's very important to the community that, that we once again provide this service. And then I also want to finalize my comments with the Board of Commissioners meetings. I did a cursory review yesterday. Most of our neighbors are doing some sort of combined in-person, virtual, depending on the circumstances, meetings. I know the governor's order continues to allow us to do it. But I think it's time for us to come up with a plan as well as to how we're going to conduct our meetings.
Other questions or comments? Questions, rather?
I have an additional question. I heard Kenneth say that we have over 4,600 employees. And you were looking at the percentage out of 123 COVID-positive employees. And I think we need to really look at the percentage based on how many employees are actually coming to work because we do have quite a few employees that are teleworking. It's not that we have the entire 4,600-plus employees working in the buildings. So can, can you tell me what the number is as far as the total number of employees that are actually coming into work?
I will run that analysis and send it to you in about 10 to 20 minutes.
All right, thank you so much.
Send it to all of us, please.
I'd like to get that as well.
I want to ask about contract, contact tracing and where we are with that, at least as it relates to our employees. Because I think that would, you know, provide some of the information that Commissioner Hausmann and Commissioner Hall were asking about.
What specifically did you wish to ask about the contact tracing? What, what particular figure? We, in general?
What, what, are we contact tracing the employees that are tested positive?
Well, what we should be doing, what, what every, this is a reportable disease. So every person that is test positive gets into the electronic database and we are notified of that. And then we conduct, you know, contact tracing. The, the big problem, though, is to a certain extent, we are dependent on two things. One is that the person that we are, who has tested positive is forthcoming in terms of, you know, detailing who all their contacts are. And in situations where they are, these are workplace, you know, exposures, then it is, we are looking for, hopefully, the supervisors and the department to also be able to, to help us to figure out who has been in contact with that, with that test case. So we have, contact tracing is taking, is taking place, but it's not necessarily easy.
Other questions? Any other questions for this segment? All right, Madam CIO, continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it over to the CFO.
Thank you, Hannah. Good morning, Commissioner Sharon Woodmore, Chief Financial Officer. We have the CARES Fund, the normal CARES Fund update to provide for you. We can go on to the next slide, please. This slide, as you know, just gives you a, a bird's eye view of where we're at with our CARES Act fund. On this particular report, it's as of October the 2nd. As of that date, we had allocated or expensed 101.4 of the 104 million. That leaves 2.6 unallocated or unobligated. 400,000 of that is in the Community Relief Fund and comes from the, a portion of the funds that were set aside for the job training program. There were funds set aside for advertising, marketing, and media-related costs that, as of this point in time, are not being utilized. And then we did pull additional funds from a, a number of areas in order to re-establish a small reserve of about 2.1 billion. Through October 2nd, the county had actually expended 48.2 of the total 104 million. Next slide, please. This slide is provided to show you the changes between reporting periods. On the left-hand side of the slide, you'll see the changes that were made in our budget allocations between our broad categories. We made no change in the Community Relief category. In the Help Response, we made a reduction of 5.6 million, reducing that by 10%. In the Health Response, we made a reduction of five point six million, reducing that budget from twenty-four point two down to eighteen point six. In Operational Stability, we reduced six point five million, bringing that allocation down from forty-three point seven million to thirty-seven point two million. Those adjustments were made in part to increase the funds available for the municipalities. So we increased that by ten million, bringing the total to twenty-five million for the municipality reserve. And then we established a small reserve of two point one million. To the, to the comments that the manager made in his opening remarks about the changes in the guidance that have been provided in our ability to now offset some of our own internal public safety costs. That Second Wave Reserve Fund can be used for that purpose if we do not expend it for other COVID-related response items between now and the end of the year. On the right-hand side of the, of the slide, you'll see where we made these budget alignments. Specifically in the Commitment section, in the reductions, we made reductions from our healthcare cost reserve of three hundred and fifty thousand. That was the amount that we had set aside to reimburse our healthcare claims for employees who had incurred costs associated with a positive COVID diagnosis for themselves or a covered family member. We also reduced two hundred and fifty thousand out of the funds that had been set aside for inmate medical purposes. We reduced five point five million out of the reserve for PPE.
Ms. Whitmore? Excuse the interruption. I've been advised that we may be having a problem, a technical issue, that we're not, that the, that the public cannot see or hear us now. So let's take a break until we can figure out what's going on. We'll pause for a few minutes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which, which part of the broadcast? Because I know the ones that are on Zoom are okay. The public that are using Zoom are doing all right. Is it the FGTV part?
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is speaking. We were just notified that the live, the live stream signal and Zoom are still working. Our broadcast signal is what is affected. So people who are watching it through live stream and people who are watching it through YouTube are able to watch it. But people who are watching from our cable broadcast are not able to see it right now.
I've just been informed.
That I have it, I have it on FGTV right now and it's working just fine.
Okay, great. I know that we're working to resolve it, Commissioner, so.
All right, here, just a minute, everybody. I've just been informed that whatever was the problem has been corrected. So Ms. Whitmore, please continue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe I left off at the PPE that we made a reduction of five point five million from our set aside for PPE. We also made a reduction of five point five million for, from our set aside from our testing plan, as well as a one million dollar reduction from our set aside for cleaning of county facilities. Those funds were then placed into the municipal reimbursement commitment of ten million dollars. The reserve for Second Wave of two point one million dollars. And we added an additional half million dollars to provide for some additional election-related PPE for all of the voting sites through the rest of the year. Next slide, please. Commissioners, this slide is the list of outstanding purchase orders. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see that through October second, we had issued a total of forty-six point seven million in purchase orders, of which we have closed out and fully expensed seven point one million, leaving us with an open purchase order balance of thirty-nine point five million, which we've made nine point nine million in payments against those purchase orders that remain open. So in total, of the forty-six point seven million that we've issued in purchase orders, we've made payment of seventeen point one million against those POs. Of note, within the open PO listing, we still have a significant open encumbrance for our testing kits. We issued a purchase order of eight point six million with Baccotic Pathology Associates. We've spent about two point one against that thus far. And we've added, since our last presentation, we've added a small purchase order for some warehouse office supplies with Office Depot. And then we've also added a purchase order in for some air filtration purifiers for the county jail. And that totaled about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Next slide, please. This slide gives you a view of our current placeholders, commitments, and payments. Under the placeholder category on the left-hand side of the screen, we are sitting at three point six million remaining in placeholders. One point seven of that is for PPE. And one point three is what the Board of Health is continuing to execute against in the ongoing testing plan. Below that, in the Commitment section, we have a total of nineteen point nine million outstanding in commitments. The largest component of that, largest two components of that are the funds that have been committed to the municipalities. We're showing about sixteen million that is committed and not yet paid. In addition to that, we still have about one point five million out of the Community Relief Package that has not been dispersed to our partners. The majority of that is for the, the Economic Relief Package for our community artists. On the right-hand side of the screen, under dispersments, you'll see that we have paid out a total of thirty-one point one million. The largest component of that now being payments through the Community Relief Package totaling fourteen point five million, followed by the payments that we've now made to the municipalities of eight million dollars. And then our internal use for hazard pay at the beginning of the pandemic. And when you add all of those categories together, that's what totals the one hundred and one point four million that was shown on the first slide. Next slide, please. This is the summary of our Community Relief Package. If you'll note, under the first phase, we had eight point, eight million eighty-two thousand budgeted, fully committed. And we have paid out seven million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and seventy-one of that amount. In Phase Two, we, we are showing that we have four hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars remaining to be committed. And again, that is coming from the job, the job training program. And we have expended a total of fourteen point six million against that twenty-one million dollar budget for the Community Relief Package. Next slide, please. This slide updates our current status for the Municipal Reimbursement Program. As the county manager indicated in his opening remarks, as of October second, we had a total of five municipalities that had not approved the IGA and had not received an advance payment. Since that point in time, we have received the IGA for Chattahoochee Hills and have received notification that the City of Sandy Springs has approved their IGA. So they should be receiving their advanced payments in this week's check run. And so that leaves three cities to submit their approved IGA or notify us of the status of their approved IGA, and we can make the advanced payments to those as well. Again, the manager mentioned that we've made payments totaling eight point nine million dollars. Twenty-five million dollar allocation. I would note that the City of Alpharetta hasn't been fully, has, has at this point in time received a hundred percent of their, their allocation, and there should be no future reimbursement needed for the City of Alpharetta. Next slide, please. Mr. Chairman, I have two parts to my, to my comments today. One is on the CARES Act and the other is on. I'm not sure.
Actually, the budget is next. Let's finish, let's take questions on this section before you get to the budget.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners?
I had a couple of questions.
All right, Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. Great presentation. Overall, well, first question, which three cities have not submitted their IGAs?
As of this morning, it would be the City of Milton, College Park, and Palmetto.
Okay, thank you. Looking at the, well, overall, including the twenty-five million earmarked for cities, what do we have left that needs to be spent by the end of the year? And I'm looking at my math here, but I want to get, get, get your guesstimation in terms of, I know we have commitments for expenditures. So is it, I think it's a forty million dollar, some odd number, what I'm looking at. I wanted to see what you had.
Yes, sir. I mean, so in absolute terms of absolute cash, we have expended the forty-eight point, forty-eight point two million. So it would be the difference between what we are allocated. It's about fifty-five point eight million. So in terms of pure cash, we need to spend roughly six, fifty-six million.
Fifty-six million. Now, is that minus twenty-five million in cash for the cities, or is that including?
Well, Commissioner Carr, the twenty-five million, so it's about sixteen mil, sixteen million of the fifty, fifty-six million is what's related to the cities.
Okay, sixteen million of that. Okay. Do you think in your opinion that we're going to spend all of this money by December thirty-first?
Yes.
We are working very diligently to ensure that we are on track to spend those funds. We have that two point one million dollar reserve that hasn't been allocated to anything in particular. And our plan at this point in time would be to be able to offset some of our own internal costs that to date we have not considered as part of our use of the CARES Act Fund. So we, we are working diligently to make sure that everything that we've issued a purchase order against, that we are tracking its delivery and receipt so we can make payment against it. For those items where we have commitments, much like the municipality where we know we have a spending plan for that, we will be working with the cities to ensure that they are able to submit their documents, their review timely for, for payments to be made. So we believe that we will, we will spend the resources that we, that we have been provided. And I believe that Ms. Roach and Dr. Rochelle are looking at potential uses from a community needs perspective for any funds that we determine between now and really probably the end of November that we may not either receive what we've ordered or the need that we thought we originally had is not present, then we would have a plan in place to be able to, to react and expend those funds as well on other needs that, that arise.
I'm glad to hear that from Ms. Anna and Dr. Rochelle. I don't want to see us giving back any money to the federal government at the end of the year. And, you know, keeping it in mind, we're talking, you know, on average, we got to spend over a half a million dollars a day to get this money spent. So it's, you know, it, it's a great problem to have, but, you know, it's, it's hard to spend a half a million a day. But, but we want to make sure we blow through this responsibly, but I don't want to leave any on the table. So I appreciate that. And let's just keep, just, you know, I'm sure you're keeping track of that. But let's, you know, make sure we get, getting it out the door, getting the purchase orders in or whatever we need to do as fast as possible. Because I'm afraid things will slow down over the holidays a bit when you got orders waiting and they may say, well, we won't have that for you till next year. Then it's too late. We can't, we can't receive it then. Is that right?
We could still receive it, but we would not be able to use the CARES Funds to pay for it. So in fact, that's part of our, our decision process as well is are there items that we have on order that we believe we will need? And will we be making some trade-offs between using CARES Funds for those things this year versus perhaps offsetting some of our public safety costs and being able to carry those funds then forward to next year to use to pay for the receipt? Let's say like gloves. I'll use gloves as an example. Gloves are very difficult to find and come by and receive. So we have an order in place. We're receiving an allotment. But if we are not able to completely expend the purchase order that we have in place this year, we may be able to carry forward that encumbrance next year through using the CARES Funds this year to offset some of our public safety.
I got you. It's kind of a budgetary carry forward. I got it.
Those are the things that we're looking at and we'll be, we'll be talking about those more over, particularly over the course of the next four weeks as we begin our normal year-end closeout process. But also as we, we, we think through making sure that we fully expend these resources that have been made available to us.
Okay, well, just, just keep it in mind. I mean, these eighty-five days, eighty-four days, we got, it's not really eighty-four days.
Yes, sir.
Because again, these outfits are going to be shut down over the holidays and so on and so forth. So, all right, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yes, Ms. Whitmore, I understand that there's a new treasury regulation that allows for broader reclaim of the police and fire, or basically allows us to recoup all of that money. And so is that what you're anticipating will help cover a large portion of that?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman. It, it does allow, it is a much broader interpretation of what expenses can be considered and what expenses you have to be able to show specific correlation between the expense and the COVID response. So public safety and public health were the two categories where the, the requirements were broadened. And those are the areas that we'll be looking at.
Thank you. Do you have an idea what the rough number might be to, if we were to recoup all of those expenses?
If we were to try to recoup all of the expenses?
For police and emergency, you know, as, as outlined under the new regulations? That we didn't, the ones that we didn't previously?
Yeah, yes, sir. So, so our, our single largest public safety expense that would qualify would be costs associated with the county jail. So, you know, that, that in and of itself is close. If we take all of the costs, but even just the personnel cost or somewhere around, I think, like fifty, at least fifty million alone in personnel-related costs.
So it wouldn't be any problem to make up that gap or? Spend a certain amount of money per day in order to meet that. We've already incurred way over whatever the amount is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon, I have one more, one more quick question. The Treasury's Department, the broadening of their boundaries of constraint. Now, I'm assuming that, that broadening would of course apply to the, to the city's expenditures as well. Is that right?
It does. That's in fact what has allowed us to be able to reimburse more of the costs that they had previously submitted was that, that expansion.
Have we, have we notified them specifically of the, of the, of the expansion at the boundaries?
Yes. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Well, thank you. Continue, Ms. Whitmore.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Commissioners, the next item that I have is to give you a, another update on our twenty-twenty position as well as our twenty-twenty budget planning process. So, next slide. When I, when I first shared information with you, I believe, at the September second meeting, the tax bills had not yet been released. Since that point in time, the Tax Commissioners Office has finalized the billings for twenty-twenty and we've received our billing reconciliation information. And so this slide was prepared to give you a view of what those changes were. In total, we had an increase in tax billings of about twenty-four million dollars. That twenty-four million dollars is derived from really three different, three different buckets, if you will. The first one is the total gross digest increased by five hundred and sixty-seven million from the point in time that we received the estimate until the digest was finally certified by the Revenue Commissioner. That increased our tax billings by about five point seven million. Additionally, at the point in time that we made our original projections and set the mill rate for the county, the Freeport exemption application process had not finalized yet. And we made an estimate that the Freeport exemptions would approximate the same level as the previous year. They came in roughly two hundred and fifty-four million dollars short of what our approximation was. And that generated an additional two point five million dollars in tax billings. And the last item and the most significant is around the estimate made for appeals. We used the, the appeals volume and value from two thousand nineteen and made a slight adjustment to it. And this year's appeals volume and value was such that it actually was less than what we had anticipated and it increased the tax billings by fifteen point eight million. So that's the total of twenty-four million. And at this point in time, we still are, for projection purposes, we are still working with a lower collection rate of about ninety-one percent. So what we have built into our numbers for twenty-twenty is that of that twenty-four million change in billings, we would collect roughly twenty-one point eight million of that in this year, and the balance would be carried forward into twenty-twenty-one as a prior year receivable. Next slide, please. From an expense projection standpoint, we wanted to, to give you an idea again of where we are currently projecting our expenditures will end this year. We adopted a budget of seven hundred and eighty-two million. We have about forty-nine million that we've reserved through our spending control measures, and then we're running about twelve million below that in other, other expense underruns. So we, we're still thinking that we'll end the year at about seven hundred and twenty-one million. That's about ninety-two, at a ninety-two percent spend rate against the seven eighty-two. Next slide, please. Looking at, at where that would leave us at the end of the year from a fund balance perspective. In the information that we shared with you in early September, which is on the left-hand side of the slide, we had projected for twenty-twenty total revenue of six sixty-nine, total expenses of seven twenty-one, and an estimated ending fund balance of one hundred and fifty-three million. On the right-hand side, with the changes made for the impact of the twenty-twenty tax billings, we've now projected twenty-twenty revenue of six hundred and ninety million. We've left the expenses at seven twenty-one, and that will lead us to a projected fund balance of a hundred and seventy-four million. Next slide, please. Moving on now to what does this mean for the twenty-twenty-one budget development process? On the left-hand side of the screen, this is what we originally were contemplating as our twenty-twenty-one budget footprint. That was coming, coming in with a hundred and fifty-three million in available fund balance. We were estimating about seven hundred and eight million in revenues with that leaving us then room for about seven hundred and thirty-eight million in expenditures and staying in compliance with the fund balance reserve policy of sixteen point six seven percent of budgeted expenditures. On the right-hand side, with the new tax billing information in hand, we've updated our budget footprint. We're now bringing forward the hundred and seventy four, hundred and seventy-five million in fund balance. We've increased our revenue anticipation from the seven hundred and eight million to seven hundred and thirty million because the, the additional billings that were generated this year add to the base for next year as well. And then that allowed us to, I'm having, bringing forward more in fund balance and, and being able to add to the base of the tax revenue. That increased our budget footprint from seven thirty-eight to seven hundred and seventy-five million and would leave us with a projected fund balance of about a hundred and twenty-nine million, which meets our fund balance reserve policy. Next slide, please. This, this slide demonstrates that the change in the budget footprint against the base budget that was developed for twenty-twenty-one. So when we presented originally with the, the expenditure footprint of seven hundred and thirty-eight million and a base budget of seven hundred and eleven million, that left us about twenty-seven million available to allocate to things that were not included in the base budget. With our revisions, we now have the, the seven hundred and seventy-five million dollar footprint against that same base budget of seven hundred and eleven million, which gives us about sixty-four million now to allocate against things not included in the base budget. Next slide, please. So what are those things that are not included in that seven hundred and eleven million dollar base budget? We have a list of about seventy-nine million. And to the manager's comments at the beginning, you'll see that we have broken that list out into categories, personnel and operational. A total of thirty-five point five million of personnel-related costs, the majority of which, twenty-five million of that would be recurring costs. And then forty-three point five million in operational cost, of which about ten million would be considered recurring. So the types of things that we have already identified that are not included in our base budget would be funding of vacant positions, the compensation plan, the incremental compensation strategy, as well as the chambers pay plan, pay for performance, educational incentive, virtual environment and infrastructure. This category captures a lot of the continuing cost components related to improving our our ability to provide digital government services and maintain a, a remote workforce as well as continue to improve our, our virtual court technology that we ended up standing up during the middle of the pandemic. We also have about twelve million dollars worth of non-recurring enhancements that would be considered for funding. And then through our internal discussions, we've recognized that there are some incremental costs that we will need to consider relative to a justice system restart and a backlog reduction because the court system has been not, you know, able to function fully during this, you know, during this pandemic. And then lastly, we earmarked as a placeholder about fifteen million for continued emergency response and risk mitigation. So we, in total, that's about seventy-nine million to try to allocate against that sixty-four million that we would, that we would be bringing forward and have available for allocation. Next slide, please. With regard to our next steps, we had some conversation around this as well over the last couple of weeks. And as it stands right now, the department submittal window closed out on September twenty-fifth. And the Budget Office is in the process of accumulating and reconciling all of the information that was submitted. Our deputy COOs have begun already to initiate and have discussions with their departments around the requests submitted and looking for input from them on priorities and needs. They will also be reaching out to the members of the Board of Commissioners to seek your input as well on budget priorities and needs. That should take place between really starting last week and running through October fourteenth. Then the fifteenth through the twenty-third is when we will begin meeting with the deputy COOs to hear from them the information that they have accumulated from, from their agencies that need to be considered as priorities. And, and if it's not something that's already in that list that I just reviewed, then it will, it will be added to that list and, and considered along with everything else. And then the twenty-sixth through the twelfth is when we will really begin finalizing and drafting the proposal that we will submit to the board. And this year, what we would like to do is to hold some one-on-one meetings with the Board of Commissioners. Once we have, once we have our proposal mapped out in order to give you a briefing and seek some feedback from you prior to the final submission on November thirteenth. By the budget ordinance, I believe we're required to submit it to you on on or before November fifteenth. So trying to work it around the board's board meeting schedule. Our plan is to submit it to you formally on November thirteenth and then present it publicly at the board meeting on November the eighteenth. And following that, in the month of December, we will hold the legally required public hearing for the budget at the first meeting in December. And then, of course, during, during each of the meetings in December and the meetings in January, the board will have the opportunity to make changes to the proposed budget. And we would again be set to be able to adopt the budget at either the first or the second meeting in January. And that is the, that's the, the outline for this year's process. And with that, Mister Chairman, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmore. Questions, Commissioners?
Mister Chairman, I have some.
Commissioner Morris?
Sharon, can we go back to your slide thirty-one? I think that, that's the number in the yeah. I guess a couple of questions on the assumptions about the revenue. We, we, of course, before the COVID economic impact hit, property taxes, of course, were, were based on January first, twenty-twenty values. And so the billings are higher than, than if made, arguably, they will be based on values on January one, twenty-twenty-one. When office buildings, retail buildings, apartments might be suffering from vacancies in, in office and retail and suffering from from people who aren't able to pay their rents. And so I'm wondering, first of all, what kind of assumptions we might have made about the impact on property tax billings in twenty-twenty-one because of the impact economically of COVID-nineteen that didn't exist on January one, twenty-twenty? And that's one question. And the second question is, is the assumptions you made about about the collectibility of property taxes because again of the economic impact of COVID-nineteen, both in this year and in arguably next year. People who've lost their jobs aren't being able to pay their mortgages and may not be able to pay their property tax bills. You can those two questions clear?
Yes, sir. Okay, so I'll answer the second question first. With regards to the collection rate, we've made an assumption for twenty-twenty that the collection rate would be ninety-one percent. We made that assumption sort of following what we saw happen with the last recession that, that we experienced, what, what we saw kind of happen to collections. And when we had the mortgage crisis at, at, back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten timeframe.
I'm sorry, can I, can I interrupt you and ask you about that? I saw that you were basing the ninety-one percent on the new increased twenty-five million or so of billing. But we, were we making that assumption when we set the budget in January of twenty-twenty that we were going to collect ninety-one percent on all of the property tax revenues?
No, sir. And when we adopted the budget in twenty-twenty, the assumption was that we would have, the revenue assumptions were that we would have at least three percent growth in billable value in the digest and that we would have a ninety-six percent collection rate.
Right. So, so we're still assuming with the seven hundred and thirty million dollar number on this slide, that ninety-six percent rate on all but the new twenty-five million, and we're assuming ninety-one on that money. Right?
So the ninety-one percent assumption is really ninety-one percent against the full tax levy in twenty-twenty.
Okay, okay.
So, so that's for the, the twenty-twenty projections. For twenty-twenty-one, I believe we returned back to our standard ninety-six percent.
I think it was ninety-four.
Ninety-four. We did, we drop it to ninety-four? Ninety-four for twenty-twenty-one.
For the reasons I articulated, the possibility of not collecting them.
Yeah, yes, it's really for the ability, the, having the ability to pay. It is really what's kind of driving both the thought for twenty-twenty and the thought for twenty-twenty-one. The other basic assumption that's embedded in that updated footprint is that the digest itself will be flat. That there will be no growth in the digest. And we've had some, some discussions with Mister Robinson and the portion of the commercial digest that is expected to be substantially impacted, of course, is centered around retail, hospitality, some, some commercial residential, that would be the apartment component. That would be the apartment component. But he, he is also stressing that, that there is growth in other sectors of the commercial digest that will help offset those anticipated reductions. So this is based on a, a flat digest. If we went with the, the other, the other scenario that we have looked at is tying again back into the last recession. What we saw happen with our property values was a significant reduction in, in values of like, I believe it was five percent, five to six percent. So we, we have, we have that scenario as well, but based on more recent conversations with our chief appraiser, we're looking at this no-growth scenario. That, which is what this updated footprint is based on. I'll be happy to send you what the other scenario looks like. I think we did cover it in the previous, the previous update.
So, so you've taken into consideration the issues I articulated. I guess the question will be what, what actually pans out with?
Yes.
With, with all of this. And we all know that for a while. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, everyone. Any closing comments, Madam CEO or Mr. Manager? No?
No, sir.
I'll refer to the manager.
His answer was no. Thank you very much, Madam CEO. Madam Clerk, continue, please.
Continuing on page eleven, under open and responsible government, two-zero-dash-zero-six-nine-eight, county manager. Request replication of countywide emergency procurement.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Mr. Morris?
And I'll, I'll just ask this of the county manager, I suppose, and he can refer me. On, on the back page of the materials, there is a six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar item, software solution to ensure and support the provision of core medical and support services for persons living with HIV. And it's listed as being a COVID-nineteen, I guess, coming out of the hundred-and-four-million dollars. Is it, is it COVID-related because it has something to do with folks living with HIV being more susceptible to to problems with COVID? I didn't, I wasn't sure why that was a COVID item necessarily, but that might have been my guess. And then
Mister?
It might be really an emergency kind of thing as opposed to something come to us.
Commissioner Morris, the reason, the reason why that is included in the emergency procurements related to COVID is because the procurement was issued and made to allow the funded agencies by Ryan White to offer virtual services to those persons living with HIV who are receiving services from them. And they had to set up that virtual environment as a result of trying to achieve social distancing and other means to provide services.
Thank you. That's logical. Appreciate it.
All right, anyone else? Not this. Need a vote. All right, if there's a motion, please. All right, second, let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yeah.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six-eight-zero-eight. Two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-zero, Board of Registration and Elections, request approval of a one-time grant fund to support the purchase of twenty-five absentee drop boxes and require a company to raise the camera.
All right, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
I'll second, let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six-eight-zero-eight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Am I the only one that can't hear Commissioner Hausman?
I was going to say. Commissioner Hausman did not vote on that one, I believe.
She voted, but we can't hear her, is my question.
Commissioner Hausman?
Now you were, you, we heard that a little bit, not muted, but very faint.
Okay, well, I voted yes.
Okay.
Unanimous.
All right, unanimous. Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Watching out for you.
Appreciate it.
Two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-one, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of the lowest responsible bidder to provide standby fencing installation and repair services.
Even though it's the only bidder, I'll, I'll move approval.
All right, properly moved in second, and let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr? I vote yes.
Yes.
And motion passes unanimously. On page twelve, two-zero-dash-zero-two-zero-two, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval to extend a existing contract to continue to provide without disruption project management oversight to the remaining construction projects for the procurer policy capital improvement program.
All right, entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Hausman?
Could someone, please, for the benefit of the public, explain what this item is?
Good morning, Commissioners. This particular item is the extension of the contract with Harry McAfee, which is the program management team associated with our urban redevelopment bond program. This particular contract allows for Harry McAfee to manage our projects, develop the specifications for the projects associated with the bond program and provide general contractor oversight for all projects associated with the procurer program.
So is this a new contract or an extension of an existing contract?
Extension of existing.
And there's an increased amount?
The amount for this particular contract is based on the timeframe for their services as quoted in their, their bid solicitation. And it's in the budget for the bond program.
And the reason for the extension of the contract?
The urban redevelopment bond program will not conclude until approximately twenty-twenty-three. And so this extension allows us to continue with program management through that end, through the end of the program.
And what's covered, again, for the benefit of the public in this bond package?
Various redevelopment projects associated with the downtown facilities, the Justice Center complex, Juvenile Justice Center complex, as well as the Government Center. It covers projects such as the exterior restoration of the courthouse. It also covers the restroom and interior ADA modifications of the courthouse as well as exterior cladding for the Juvenile Justice Center, elevator modifications, and very similar projects of the same nature here in the Government Center. Multiple M-E-P or mechanical, electrical, and plumbing contracts, domestic water piping, HVAC equipment replacements and upgrades, and things of that nature.
So are these new items that were not included in the original package or just an extension of the time period to complete the project?
This is the, these are, all the projects mentioned were in the original programming of the overall bond program. However, this is the program management or contract administration of all those projects. The program was always going to end between twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. Now that we have a clearer picture of that end time, we needed to match our project management or program management to that schedule.
So what's the reason for the extended time period of the contract?
Because initially, the program management contract was only intended to cover what we knew at the time the program started. As the projects and things that we're going to do under the bond program became more in focus, we then determined that we needed to extend this particular court force contract to cover that timeframe.
Are there additional items that are going to cost more money due to this extension?
No, ma'am.
So this is the only thing that's going to, the only change order that's going to be required, even though the contract is going longer than we anticipated?
I think it's important to understand that this agenda item is simply the overall contract administration. As it relates to the execution of the bond program, there are multiple contracts and projects that this Harry McAfee team will manage on behalf of the county. Though I can't say that there won't be a change order because there may be an individual project at some point in the future that will require a change order, but that is unrelated to this particular agenda item.
So this is almost two million dollars. And again, for what time period is the extension? How long is it extended?
Three years.
Thank you.
All right, entertain a motion to approve. All right, I'll move approval. Is there a second? All right, properly moved in second. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
No.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr? I vote yes.
And motion passes.
Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-three, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of the lowest responsible bidders to provide glass and plexiglass repair replacement.
Move approval.
My second, let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-four, Information Technology, request approval of statewide contract for network wireless access point.
All right, is there a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second. Cast your votes, please. Hausman?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Arrington?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Public Human Services, two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-five, Public Works, request approval of the lowest responsible bidder to provide spray, fill, duracat, proportioner system, and gymset compression combo package.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move.
Second, let's cast your votes, please. Ms. Hausman?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. On page thirteen, two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-six, Public Works, request approval of cooperative purchasing to review billing and water meter accuracy.
Move approval.
All right, I'll second. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
I was voting yes, I didn't.
I record Commissioner Morris is voting yes.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Under Arts and Libraries, two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-seven, request approval of an increase in spending authority to provide wayfind construction administrative services for the Central Library Media Tower.
Move approval.
Let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Infrastructure and Economic Development, two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-eight, Public Works, request approval of a resolution approving an extension into governmental agreement with the City of South Fulton for inspection and permitting services for the Anthem at Riverside project for senior citizens.
Move approval.
Second.
Second, properly moved in second, and let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
All right, and Vice Chair votes yes, Carr votes yes, and I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
On page fourteen, two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero, two-zero-dash-zero-seven-zero-nine, Public Works, request approval of recommended proposal for the total mixed membrane systems for the Big Creek wastewater reclamation facility expansion.
Move approval.
Okay, I'll second. Someone else seconded. Any questions or comments about this one? Now, cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously.
All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Action Item, Full Board Appointments, two-zero-dash-zero-seven-one-zero, Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, Region Advisory Council. Karen Pitts has nominated Sanita Joshua Jashi for a full board reappointment to a term ending August first, twenty-twenty-two.
All right, I'll move approval on this one. All right, properly moved in second. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six-eight-zero-eight. Two-zero-dash-zero-seven-one-one, Administrative Committee of the Fulton County Defined Contribution Plan. The Administrative Committee of Fulton County Defined Contribution Plan recommended, recommended Yamas Samoka, Samo- Samakas for a full board reappointment to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Move approval.
All right, I'll second. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes. Yes.
All right, Vice Chair votes yes, and I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously.
Continue.
And we have back to the consent agenda. First, first item is on page four. Two-zero-dash-zero-six-seven-zero, Community Development, request approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Gateway Center to serve as the lead agency to work with Fulton County Home and Division to create a new countywide assessment center.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes, I have just two questions. Oh, hi, Dr. Rochelle. Can't hear you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. So I'm, I'm really happy to see that we're moving in a more strategic direction to provide homeless and homeless prevention services to our county citizens. And so my question is, does this include a plan for working closer with other HHS departments?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Hall, this plan will include partnerships with our existing partners or internal organizations that also provide homeless services. So we have taken a more strategic approach, as you have said, to ensure that not only do we partner with those internal organizations, but that we start to collect their homeless data information through our HMIS partnership. And we actually have a training coming up with HMIS and those partners to ensure that we work much more closely and that we collect the good work that is going on across the depart, the cross the, the county.
Okay, that's great. So I'm, I'm hoping that we will integrate the delivery of the county's homelessness services through like the jail, behavioral health, HIV/AIDS.
All of those organizations have already received an invitation to the HMIS training, which will take place over the next couple of weeks.
Great, thank you so- Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Did you have another? Uh, Commissioner Hall, did you have a second question?
Oh, I just, I asked both of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
You and Dr. Rochelle addressed alike today, it seems like.
I was gonna comment on that.
Doc, Dr. Rochelle.
Oh, Dr. Rochelle, yeah!
Carr, just a minute, just a minute. We're, we're complimenting, uh, Dr. Rochelle, with Commissioner Hall.
Yes, look, great minds think alike, Dr. Rochelle.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, Commissioner Carr, you have it for?
Thank you, Chairman.
Dr. Rochelle, I forgot to wear my black. Uh, just wanted to let you know, I definitely appreciate, uh, we've, I've been fighting for homeless consideration and more consideration since I got into office. Um, we can never turn our backs on the homeless and this, uh, collecting that homeless data is so very, very important in terms of coming up with a solution. You know, I drive up here every, every day, every other day, and I see the homeless all out on the street, literally blocks from our building. Uh, we have to do what we can to help and put forth some effort. And it's fine saying you're an advocate for it, but putting the money and funding behind it, that's where the, the rubber meets the road. So I completely support this, uh, one thousand percent.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner.
Alright.
Alright, I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, properly moved in second. Cast your votes please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington? Commissioner Carr?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes six eight zero eight. The next item on consent, two zero dash zero six seven one on page five. Community Development request approval of resolution to amend the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four proposed consolidated plan as a twenty twenty annual action plan.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes. Okay, um, you know, I was, I was thinking about the BLC had approved the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four consolidated plan and the twenty twenty action plan, um, as of July eighth. Well, as of the July eighth BLC meeting. So, um, how does this amendment impact the twenty twenty HUD allocations for, uh, CBG, ESG, and home programs?
Commissioner Hall, thank you for the question. Uh, this agenda item is basically an administrative action. Back in April, HUD issued guidance to provide waivers to our home program. Our home program provides down payment assistance as well as home rehabs for eligible constituents in Fulton County. And HUD issued some guidance to make the process easier in a variety of different ways. The Department of Community Development notified HUD that we would like to take advantage of those waivers, but we did not include that information in the consolidated plan that the board approved on July twenty-eighth. So to make that correction, we are here today to ask for approval to include that waiver notice in our consolidated plan so that we can move forward with receiving our funds that have already been earmarked for twenty twenty for Fulton County.
Okay, great. You answered, um, my next question and what you just said. And, um, so can we spend down the twenty twenty funds without an approved action plan? Would we be able to?
No, ma'am. So, yeah, thank you for that question. The amendment today is required in order for the county to spend the, the allocation that we receive.
Okay, great. And, um, when did the county receive the twenty twenty funding allocation letter from HUD though?
Um, Commissioner Hall, I can get you a copy of that letter. We have been notified. I just don't have the date, uh, with me. Um, that information is on the HUD exchange and we have been notified by HUD of our allocation which is approximately two point nine million dollars, which is an increase from twenty nineteen.
Two point nine million?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's really good. Okay. Um, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And we also received an additional five point three million to respond to COVID under ESG and CDPG.
Oh, that is really good news. Okay. Alright, and, um, is there also an annual report that must be approved by HUD?
Yes, it's called a CAPER. And our CAPER actually was just approved this week and we did receive notice from HUD. Our consultant M and L ensured that our CAPER was constructed according to HUD guidelines and we received very quick approval for that CAPER.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Rochelle.
You're welcome.
Did we move approval? If not, I will.
My second. Let's vote please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Uh, vote yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
One more and then we'll recess for lunch.
On page eight on the consent agenda, two zero dash zero six eight six real estate and asset management request approval of resolution to declare certain Fulton County owned real property as surplus.
Alright. And I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, properly moved in second. Any questions or comments? Let's vote.
I want, uh, I just wanted to make sure that this is for, uh, not for all of the available parcels. This is just for a, a couple of parcels that we had talked about, uh, in, in some of the other sessions. Is that right?
Ellis Kirby, Deputy CEO, this is one parcel that was discussed.
Okay. Just wanted to double check on that. Alright.
Let's vote please.
Wait, is this the, is this the, um, parcel on Halmil Road? I mean, Donnelly Hollowell?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain exactly what the project is? I do have the, oh, you can't see it, but I do have, um, like a chart, but can you explain what it is?
Uh, this is the, the partial that was directed by the board in support of a development project on Donnelly, Donald Lee Holloway Parkway, excuse me.
What type of project? What is it?
Well, uh, we really, I mean, really, we're putting this piece of property for surplus. So at this point, I, I would defer to the county attorney that I should get into the project itself, but it's in support of that. And we're going through the normal surplus process to support, uh, county attorney. Should, should we get into the details?
No, at this point, uh, Commissioner Hall, what we're gonna be doing is declaring the property as surplus and then making that property available to the public for bid. And so there is, so that's what will happen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Let's vote please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington?
I said, but I wouldn't take it, I wouldn't read it.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes six eight zero eight.
Yes, unanimously.
Right. Vice Chair voted yes. Now, are there any other action items at this point?
No further action.
Until we, after executive session. I'll entertain a motion for, uh, recess.
We have one more. We have to add on.
Yeah, that's, uh, what is it?
It's, uh, two zero dash zero seven one three registration election.
No, wait, wait a minute. That's registration, that's a report, right?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll take that after, uh,
Okay.
Yeah. So, entertain a motion to recess for lunch, executive session. We have items of litigation, real estate, and personnel.
Motion.
Alright, second. Let's vote please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes.
Alright, we vote now. That's the four executive session. What are the numbers? Everybody has the numbers?
Do you have a?
Just didn't respond to that. I believe, I believe we just received an, an email with the line number.
Okay, did everybody just receive a?
From Jessica.
I received it.
You just did? Okay, so presumably everyone has just received it. So let's have lunch and what time would be a good time for us to begin executive session? It's about, what, twelve twenty-five and a quarter till? Is that a good time? Alright, so we will, uh, begin the executive session at twelve forty-five.
And Commissioner Joe Carr?
Yeah.
So we're missing two. We have a form?
Yeah.
Alright, let's proceed. So, the items from ex- we have two more items from executive session and a presentation and update on the elections. Okay.
Yes. Um, Mr. Chairman, um, I would like a motion to, um, grant representation in the matter discussed under item two on the executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Alright, properly moved in second. Yes, let's vote please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes six eight zero eight.
In regard to item number three on the executive session agenda, I, uh, would like a motion to authorize the chairman to execute the settlement agreement in the matter of Kenneth Dotson versus Fulton County, U.S. District Court from the Northern District of Georgia, Civil Action Number One nineteen dash CB dash nine oh two dash E R A L R, um, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, properly moved in second. Any questions, discussion? Not less vote. Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes five eight zero eight.
With regards to the item, uh, listed as item number six in executive session, I would like to have a motion from the board to modify the deliverable, uh, and, um, the dates in the, uh, IGAs that we have with municipalities to change the eligibility date for expenses from November fifteenth to December fifteenth and to change the submission due dates for reimbursement from December first to December twenty-first.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
And I'll second. Let's vote please. Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes five eight zero eight.
Commissioner Hausman was trying to vote yes, we couldn't hear her.
Well, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I actually made the motion twice too, so I don't know what's going on in my audio and it's a brand new laptop.
Alright, and with, with regards to item number seven in executive session, I need a motion from the board to authorize the coordination of security services for the DA, after November the fourth and to provide office space for transition purposes for the presumptive DA and presumptive sheriff elect, I mean, excuse me, sheriff, once they are the DA elect and the sher- sheriff elect on November fourth.
Uh, county attorney, does that, that includes, uh, arrangements for some type of staffing, uh, uh, within folks we got now?
And, and the county manager is authorized to work with them to try to provide existing staff members to assist them, um, after November fourth. So.
One point of clarification. In your first recitation, you referred to the DA, but again, that's the presumptive DA.
Correct. And it will be actually on November, starting on November fourth, when they will be the DA elect.
That does include also office space in one forty-one Prior Street, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Hausman.
And this is for DA and chair, correct?
That's correct. Office space.
And, and staff.
Yeah, office with the staff but not security.
From existing staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Alright, I'll second. Let's vote please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
That's it.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hall's volume is much clearer than everybody else. That's why I said, I mean, hers is really clear and, and, and is it her computers or what? I didn't hear the question. I said, we can always hear Commissioner Hall, I mean, loudly, clearly compared to the others. Just curious.
Uh, each individual have control.
Well, something she's doing is right that the others aren't, because hers is always very clear. Alright, uh,
Let me just tell you, I actually had IT dial in and take control of my computer trying to fix the problem and it's brand new. I've had it a month. I have no idea.
You're just so soft spoken.
Thank you again. You've been so kind today, Commissioner Morris.
Lee, were you talking about her or me?
I've always thought you were soft spoken, Marvin.
Yeah.
Um, okay, next item.
On page three of the add-on memo, it's the, uh, add-on item, item two zero dash zero seven one three. Presentation, Registration and Elections Update.
Mr. Barron, you with us? Mr. Barron?
He's in the next room?
Yeah.
First, uh, can I have the slide presentation up, please? In case you're unaware, we do have an election on November third. Uh, next slide, please, Mike. So, I'm gonna give you some information on resources for absentee ballots. The, our phone number is six one two seventy sixty to get out absentee ballot info. The web address is FultonCountyGA.gov backslash absentee ballot. The postal service recommends requesting absentee ballots by October twentieth to ensure timely delivery. The legal deadline is October thirtieth, but we agree with the postal services recommended deadline. Uh, you can track, voters can track their ballot at ballotrequest.sos.GA.gov. They can go there, sign up, and it's, you'll receive either text messages or emails on the status of your ballot. We now have thirty-seven absentee ballot drop boxes in place. That can be found at FultonCountyGA.gov backslash absentee Dropbox. And we have plans for one more, uh, in Chattahoochee Hills to be installed shortly. Next slide, please. We've already processed two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-one absentee ballot applications. That's seventy, about seventy thousand more than we did in June. Thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one of those are duplicates. Uh, about three thousand of that thirty-three thousand are, are rejections. And we, uh, contact the voters if their absentee ballot application has been rejected. One hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and forty ballots have been mailed from the feedback from, uh, voters and just my own experience, it's taking anywhere from seven to fourteen days for ballots to reach voters, uh, from, from run back. And we've already received through yesterday thirty-six thousand, forty-eight ballots back and about one-third of those have come through the drop boxes. So they are- So they are being used every day. And we empty them on a daily basis, next slide, please. Uh, as I said earlier, to track your ballot, any ballot that is mailed by October sixteenth, those will be mailed by run back. And you can sign up to track your ballot at Georgia dot ballottracks.net backslash voter. If you request a ballot. October seventeenth or later, Fulton County will mail that. Voters can track that by going to the My Voter page or calling six one two seven zero six zero, which is. Which will feed them into one of our two call centers. Next slide. We have thirty permanent early vote, voting locations open for nineteen straight days. We also have our two mobile voting units and I will talk about those in a moment, we have three. Uh, we have outreach locations at the three state colleges as well as three senior centers. And we are also adding Palmetto Library as an outreach site from October nineteenth to October thirtieth. We will have at least thirty-three polling locate, or early voting locations open every day and up to thirty-five locations. And just for a frame of reference, we will have more early voting locations open than Gwinnett, DeKalb and Cobb counties combined. So our voters are, uh, being enfranchised in a way that none of the other counties are providing to their voters. Next slide, please. The, this is the early voting flyer, these are all the permanent locations. And they are listed in alphabetical order on here, you can see that the. From October twelfth through the sixteenth and. Gosh, my, I need my glasses, uh, October twelfth through the twenty-third, we're open eight, eight AM to six PM. And then, uh. The last week, which would be October. I got a little.
Seventeen.
Yeah, October twenty-sixth to the thirtieth, it's seven to seven, we're open both Saturdays, October seventeenth and twenty-fourth from eight to six. And on Sundays, October eighteenth and twenty-fifth from ten AM to six PM. Next slide. Now, the, the bus schedule, these are, we have two buses, one, the second one is being delivered, uh, on Friday. Both of those will be out in use beginning on Monday. And you can see based on the schedule that we have two, two in play each day throughout. We balance those throughout the commissioner precincts, we had to place them either at. A taxpayer-funded site or at a site that is being used also as an election day site. That, uh, that is part of the law with regard to early voting and how you cite early voting. Those, the, the mobile voting precincts will follow the same hours as the regular, the regular early voting sites. And they will be open seven to seven that third week, the last two days of early voting, we will use those to go to the. To the sites that need help with overflow. And we'll make that determination where they're gonna go at the beginning of week three. And then those will be put into the parking lots of the two, the two busiest sites. Next slide, please. This slide is important, we, we had a hundred and sixty-four locations for June ninth, we increased that to a hundred and seventy-five for August eleventh. And then for November third, we have two hundred and fifty-five election day locations. We've had mailers go out to all voters, but the key message to all voters is to, to make sure you know before you go on election day. There's been ninety-one polling places that have been added, uh, since June and so many voters are affected by this. You have to vote by, according to Georgia law. Uh, at your polling place, your assigned polling place on election day, almost all of our polling places have five thousand voters or less now. We have, um, I think ten that have above, ten to, ten to twelve that are above. Uh, five thousand voters, but we have purchased so much equipment, um, especially with regard to poll pads to check in voters. That we are gonna be able to process voters much quicker than we have in any election, uh, since I've been here. Because we've all, we've doubled the number of check-in, uh, stations than we've ever had before. Now, I'll turn it over to Jessica for the last, uh, three slides.
Thank you, Rick, um, next slide, please. Commissioners, I'm gonna just quickly go over our information campaign, um, and I hope you've been seeing some emails from me about this. Uh, we are very excited, last week, our Fulton Votes app officially launched in the Apple Store. And as of last night, it is now live in the Google Play for Android users. Uh, so we're very excited about that, we're getting an average of about a hundred downloads a day. And we certainly expect that will grow now that, um, Android users also have access. Um, we are continuing to make content updates, for example, now that we have the mobile schedule, we will be adding that to the app. Um, we have, um, the sample ballots, some things like that, um, so voters can very quickly in the palm of their hands. Access the closest early voting location, drop boxes, connect with that absentee ballot application. Um, get sample ballots, all of that information, um, again, it's really the palm of their hand with the new app, so we're very excited about that. And we hope you will download it and help us spread the word, next slide, please. Um, as I've mentioned in this, I'm sure you have heard by now, um, we do have an information campaign that launched last Thursday. Um, and there are really three core messages to this campaign. The first is about voting by mail or absentee ballots and the message is that voting early is safe and easy, it has never been easier than it is today. Um, secondly, you can skip the lines on election day by voting early from October twelfth through the thirtieth. As Mister Baron mentioned, Fulton County has more early voting locations than the three. Um, next largest counties combined in the state of Georgia, we're very proud of that. Um, this board has supported early voting and we certainly want voters to know that this is available for them. Um, and we're expecting big turnout next week. And then lastly is know before you go, um, because, um, and Vice Chairman, I'll answer your question in just a moment. Um, know before you go, the election day locations have changed for thousands of voters with ninety-one additional. Um, election day locations, there's a very high percentage of voters who will have a different location on November third. So they have already received mail telling them about their election day location, but it's very, very important that they check to verify their election day location before they go to the polls. Uh, we're getting this message out through direct mail and I hope that you all have seen a direct mail piece. Um, we've delivered copies to your offices, but we have also, um, is starting to hit mailboxes this week. Um, so I'm holding it up for if you can see me, um, it says skip the line, vote early, and I've heard from several people who received it. Um, the next couple, last couple of days. Um, we also have spots on radio, we have digital and social media ads, digital billboards and bus shelters. And we're also, um, in the midst of making distributions to all of the other elected officials in Fulton County, including our mayors, city council members, school board members. And, um, our legislative delegation. I'm going back to the app for just a second, um, because I saw Commissioner Arrington had a note that he was not able to search for it. Yet in the Google Play Store, um, it has, um, because it has just populated in the App Store. It takes some time for the search functionality to catch up with the publication of the app. But, um, if you go to FultonElections.com, you will see the link to download it and I've also emailed that link to all of you. So the more people who download it through the link, the faster the search population will work, so, um, that's just a little bit of a glitch with the, um. With the App Store process, uh, next slide, please. So just wanted to, um, give you all kind of a snapshot of where you will see the ads that we've placed. Um, we are, um, working with a number of different radio stations, so I'm already hearing people who are hearing spots. Uh, we have, um, as you see, bus shelter ads and digital billboards, um, all over Fulton County. And we have some print ads as well, I've included a couple of here, um, and then we have ads running on Facebook, Instagram and as, as well as Google. Um, so thank you, Commissioners, we really appreciate all of your help, uh, last thing I will mention is that we have distributed a link to our. Um, digital toolkit to help people with graphics and back sheets and things like that. About, um, those three messages I've mentioned, so I would certainly ask for your help and others in the community. Um, if you know someone who would be interested in that information, just let me know, um. Our, we know that this is important information, a lot of voters across Fulton County are interested. And we want to make sure, um, in an election season in particular, that we're providing factual, accurate information to help people exercise their right to vote. Thank you all very much.
Alright, uh, are there questions for Mister Baron or Miss Corbett?
I've got questions.
Commissioner Carr, you have the floor.
A couple of things, uh, uh. Great report, uh, great update, uh, obviously everyone's nervous about, uh, how things are gonna go on election day and early voting. A couple of things, uh, I would like to see the distribution of that Fulton County, uh, voter video guide. I would like to see that distributed, uh, to all elected officials within Fulton County, so they can replay that as many times as necessary. At their, uh, community meetings and so on and so forth, so I want to make sure we get that out to all elected officials. So they can repeat it and, 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 and make it go viral and everything else, uh, as, as much as possible. So if we could get it to all elected officials countywide, that would be great.
Thank you, um, I'm sorry, I was gonna let you know, uh, Commissioner Carr, that that was sent to all, um, members of our delegation, all city council members, mayors. And the Board of Commissioners yesterday.
Don't forget school board.
And I'm sorry, the, the school board were on the list, but I will certainly be glad to recent it, we have also sent it to the, um. Communication staff for all of the cities as well as the school boards.
Good, good, very important, uh, I heard we had a two hundred thirteen thousand, uh, absentee ballots processed so far. Does anyone have an absentee ballot estimate, uh, by election day? Uh, how, how do you think we're gonna go, any, any ballpark guesses based on your calculations or anything?
We've been working with the National Voter Home Institute, uh, we're hoping that eighty, eighty percent of the voters that receive absentee ballots return them. That's what they generally will see in Colorado and some of the other western states that, that have been doing this for years. My, my hope is that we get at least a hundred and sixty thousand ballots back. Uh, we've already mailed out, um, hu- almost, almost a hundred and eighty thousand. So we're hoping to mail out more than two hundred thousand, uh, and, and I think that's easily achievable with the number of applications that we're receiving today, which is. I think averaging a little over four thousand right now.
Okay, you said you had two hundred and thirteen thousand processed so far?
Yeah, but, yeah, about thirty-three thou, almost thirty, thirty-three to thirty-four thousand of those have been either duplicates or rejected applications.
Okay. Uh, one of the issues I do have is that, uh. Uh, the mobile voting locations I'm looking at here, uh, in my opinion, are not fairly distributed at all here. Out of the twenty-four mobile locations, I count only three, uh, in the southern portion of Fulton County. And let me remind everyone, the vast majority of all of the elections issues that residents had to suffer with. Uh, the five plus six hour long wait lines were almost concentrated, all were concentrated, over eighty percent. In the South Fulton Cities, now we have nine cities within my district alone and out of twenty-four mobile locations, I count three. In the southern portion of this county and I think that is a unfair representation of the purpose of the mobile voting, uh, vans. Uh, to, to, the problem that they're supposed to solve, where we have the most difficulties, so. Uh, I mentioned before about talking to our mayors in the areas where the voter problems were most severe the last time. And that's gonna include a, a, a good majority of my area, so I'd like to see a, a, a little more, uh, equity. In terms of the mobile voting locations based on where the problems really, uh, have existed traditionally, so. Uh, uh, three, three locations out of twenty-four is not, I, I, that's unacceptable as far as I'm concerned.
What we did was we, we distributed them according by commissioner district. And we evened them out, the distribution based on each commissioner district, so we could have an even numbered amount of days in each district.
Well, I, I understand that, Richard, but part of the purpose why I approved some of this money for this type of thing is to eliminate the kind of problems that we had specifically on June ninth. And the problems, eighty percent of them, once again, uh, were in the southern portion of Fulton County, not that I want them exclusively down there. But three locations out of twenty-four where we've had the most severe problems. Just, you know, I, I think we need to maybe look, relook at how you're evaluating that, uh, we want these mobile, uh, vans to solve a problem. So, let's keep that in mind and I would like to see a few more locations and I would, again, recommend you talk with your mayors. Who had the direct brunt of the problems and issues, all during early voting and during the, uh, June ninth elections. So that's all I got.
Commissioner Houseman?
Then Morris.
Commissioner Houseman followed by Commissioner Morris.
Um, I, I just wanna make a comment to Commissioner Carr's statement just now, I do believe that in June, there were far more primary races. In the southern part of the county than there were in the north part of the county, which definitely affected turnout, so I don't know if that had anything to do with. Lines or not, but it is, I think, part of the equation. Um, Mister Baron, we, we talked this morning a lot about COVID and safety precautions we're taking. Um, can you just, for the benefit of the public, outline what kind of precautions we're taking in our precincts? So that people will understand what to expect if they vote in person and to help, help them also understand that we're trying to make it as safe as possible for them to do so.
Yes, Commissioner, um, all of our election day were, or all of our early voting workers. And, and election day workers will be required to wear masks, uh, we have face shields available, we have masks for the public. We use styluses that we sterilize, uh, in between each voter. We also have sanitizer available, both for the workers and, uh, for the voters. And then we also have sneeze guards that will be in place between the workers and, and the voters as well. Um, we also will be, um, the line managers will. Make sure that there's distance between people when they are voting in line, uh, for the carriers, we've also ordered, uh, sneeze guards in between each voting station.
Thank you, now will the equipment itself, the voting machines be cleaned periodically throughout the day as well?
We, the only way you can clean the BMDs is you have to shut them down, so that's why we went with the, with the styluses and we sanitized those in between. Because you have to turn the BMDs off, ballot marking devices, uh, and then clean them and then you have to restart them. And we didn't wanna, we don't wanna have the, the BMDs down, uh, during the day, especially if it's really busy.
Okay, I'm not sure if I've heard that before, so if y'all would just verify that, I think that would be beneficial. Um, my second question is in regard to the recent, uh, ruling from the court. That I know has been appealed, but I guess at this point, we have to operate under the assumption. That we'll have to follow the ruling that now requires that we print for every precinct, the voter lists. So that we will know on paper backup if a voter is eligible to vote on election day. How are you going to manage this and what sort of cost do you expect? This, this effort would, would, would take, should we have to go ahead with printing all of that information for election day?
We have a, we usually send out an electors list for each precinct, so the cost of this is going to be. Uh, the, I think the difference in cost that we're, we're gonna find is that. is that we have to get it produced on Saturday, the day after early voting is over, so that it has the most up-to-date records. So we've already produced an electors list before, but, and this is going to be essentially the same, but it's going to be a much more updated list. And so I don't expect the cost to be too much more than it currently is. We just, we have to get a printer that will do it, do everything on Saturday before election day.
I would imagine it would take a long time to do that on that weekend. No?
Yeah, I think, but some of the commercial printers in town should be able to handle that without too much of an issue.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Morris.
Couple of things, Mr. Barron. You referred to some of the absentee ballots that you received as being rejected. What would cause one to be rejected?
Well, in the absentee ballot applications, almost exclusively, the voter doesn't sign. And that's the same thing, almost 100%. When we get a ballot back, it's because the voter hasn't signed it. Sometimes we get ballots back from another county. So we reject those and forward them on to the county to where they belong. But it's usually a signature, a missing signature.
Okay. And then my final question is, remind us when you are now allowed to start counting the absentee ballots? Is it election day morning?
No, we can begin scanning the ballot, we can begin scanning the ballots on October 19th. And we will do that, we have that operation scheduled to begin over at State Farm Arena. We can't tabulate the ballots until 7:00 PM on election night. But once we, but we can begin scanning, so that is going to help us. We'll be able to release every, all of the absentee by mail results on election night for everything that we've received through the morning of election day. And then what will be left after election day will be what comes in on the drop boxes on election day, and then what comes in the mail on election day. So almost all of our absentee by mail results will be in election night. And we will have, we will get those out, those memory cards uploaded right at 7:00 PM and get those results right out.
Okay. And so when you scan them on the, starting on the 19th, you've got the folks that can do that, that process.
Yes, we've already arranged that. We've been working with the National Vote at Home Institute for several months. They've been helpful partner consulting with us on how best to make this go forward. We've also worked with the vendor to get our throughput increased to, so we can scan more ballots per hour than we were able to do even back in June.
Okay. And then for this technophobe, when, once they're scanned, then it's an easy process for the machines to count them?
Yes, yeah, it's very simple. Once they've been scanned in, it's a matter of reading a memory card.
Okay, all right. Then my last point is, is for Ms. Corbett. I'd love to see in the info campaign a country station or two.
All right, Commissioner, we'll take a look at that.
I did hear it on WSB.
Good.
I had one last item.
I do too.
Commissioner Carr and then Commissioner Hausmann again.
Richard, it's my understanding that according to this consent order that were precincts to open up late past 7:00 AM, that we could potentially be fined $50,000. Is that right?
Well, the consent order that we have right now, my understanding of the consent order is that once it's agreed to, if we comply with the items that are in that consent order, then no fine will be, will come down upon us, so.
Okay, so I'm clear. One of those stipulations were if we were to open up late, that a fine would be imposed?
I, it's not my understanding that it's going to be automatic in that regard, but we're doing a lot of things to make sure that we have redundancies in place to avoid having any of the polling sites open late.
Okay, county attorney, are you still here?
Yes, here, sir.
So we need to be careful on this particular item here now. Go ahead, County Attorney.
Yeah, Commissioner Carr, I can talk to you offline about that, but I don't want this information to be publicly disclosed until we have the consent order signed.
Understood.
Okay.
Well, there's a potential there. So, Richard, just so you know, obviously, we want to open on time at all precincts and be ready early to open on time, just in case. All right.
Commissioner Hausmann.
Yes, I want to go back to the absentee ballots that come in that are rejected. Do you know, do you send them back to the voter? Do you put it in the system so they are aware that it's been rejected? What's the process?
Yes, we contact the voter. We usually try to get ahold of them by phone, and then we put a letter into the mail right away and let them know how they need to cure the ballot, whether it's an application or whether it's the ballot that's come in.
Okay, very good. And then finally, what do you consider the drop dead date for someone to request an absentee ballot that you feel confident that the timing will work for them to get it back to them in the mail and returned to us in some way?
The Postal Service is recommending October 20th, and I would say that I agree with that date for the most part. You know, October 24th maybe, but if people wait until October 30th to get us an absentee by mail application, the chance of us, the chance of that getting to the voter in time for election day is slim. I mean, it happens, and the drop boxes are there, so that if they do get it, they can return it to us via the Dropbox. And we have an election day in June, also in August, a lot of people use those drop boxes on election day. So that has been a great service for the voters. And I think in this election, they're already using it in much greater numbers than they have before.
So Ms. Corbett, is that part of our marketing effort to inform folks? I know legally, they have longer than that, but realistically, are we going to tell people what, you know, is in their best interest as far as dates to apply?
Commissioner, I can give one example of that. And I absolutely, what we have used as our inner messaging is the U.S. Postal Service recommendation. I know the Postal Service did a mass mailing. I received one at home. I know, I'm sure you did as well, with their recommended date. And that is the date in our mass mailing that we have included in red. It says the U.S. Postal Service recommends requesting your absentee ballot by October 20th. So we are certainly urging people to request those early. As you know, there are lots of options with voting by mail. You can go through the Secretary of State's portal, which is our recommendation. You can, if you have a paper application, and the majority of the applications we've received so far have been paper applications. You know, that's another option, and voters have a lot of ways they can turn that in. But I agree with you, the date is really critical. And we are, we monitor social media very carefully. We've seen notes from voters who say, hey, it says it was mailed this day. It's taking, I still haven't received it. We are aware of that. So what Mr. Barron said about how long it takes to get the ballot to the voter is consistent with what we're hearing and kind of our social listening. And so we certainly are urging people to get that in on time.
Well, I mean, as you know, what is it, October 16th, we start doing it internally. It's not coming from outside of source. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Vice Chair Arrington.
Mr. Chair, I've got something that Commissioner Arrington does not.
Commissioner Ellis, I found the answer to my question.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, Mr. Barron, thanks for the update. And, you know, and maybe sort of small, you know, and given sort of the outline of all the stuff that's done here, but it's something I want to raise. You know, we've sought to fund this certainly, and every means possible, and I think that's sort of shown here. But we have, we have election staff in, out in our offices. And I'm speaking specifically to the annexes right now. And I believe this is the case in both offices, that while we have staff coming into those offices, we have people coming in to ask questions about elections, and those staff members have sealed off the offices. They don't have, the public has, they're not providing public services in those individual offices. So I don't know if that was a directive by the elections, but, you know, people are coming in, trying to register, have questions, that sort of stuff, and we have people there, but they're not taking in, they're not, they're not physically interacting with the citizens. And if that is the case, then I would certainly request that that be addressed pronto. And if it's the case by directive and it's on purpose, I'd like an explanation as to why that is the case.
We had, we have it set up to do, to do that by appointment, but with, especially, but we can, we had planned on reopening them completely once early voting started. But I know that our office here was open to anyone that came in on the last day of voter registration.
It's disappointing. I mean, this is, this is essential. People have stuff to do to get registered and all that sort of stuff before early voting starts. And the fact that we had them closed and other staff had to try to deal and respond to questions, you know, that's just not acceptable.
Okay.
So I would ask that get rectified as soon as possible.
Okay, we'll do that.
Or even if there's a way to do an active chat on the website, Fulton Elections, it could be monitored and still allow people to stay safe, but to have some live agent available to answer questions, I think is very important.
I think every elections office that we have needs to be open from here all the way through to a runoff. And I don't see any reason why they can't be.
Hey, Jessica, did you answer my question earlier? I went to Google Play, tried to download it. I didn't hear, if you answered, I guess I missed it.
Yes, Commissioner, I'll let me address that again. So the app published in the Google Play Store last night. And so it does take a minute for the search functionality to catch up. So, Commissioner, I actually texted you the link. But it is, we have the link available on the website at FultonElections.com. We are sending, we have it posted on social, so it will show up in search. It's just a little bit of a lag. But in the meantime, I sent you a text with the link, and we do have that on the website as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Barron or? Ms. Corbett. If not, any other matters to come before us, Madam Clerk?
No further items.
All right. In the absence of any other matters to come before us, without objection, we stand adjourned. It's called a roll. Commissioner Hausmann, Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner Morris, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner, Right Chair Arrington, Commissioner Carr, we are.